What is going on everybody? We are here live on the new channel to get some hardcore study in. I've got my great friend, my amazing friend, my beloved friend, my family, the real Frank Mayo. You guys can catch him at real frank mayo.com take you straight to his YouTube channel. He's gonna be doing a lot of content in the coming months and both of us are working our tails off to get better at this game of poker. And so we're gonna be doing a lot of this studies, a lot of study sessions, a lot of training. Cause we just wanna be as good as we can possibly be and move all the way up to the top. So uh yeah, we're ready to go. Frank, say hi to everybody and uh how are you doing, man?
I'm doing great, doing great. I just uh, I think maybe I'm going a little bit too hard lately. I don't know, but uh, I got a lot of goals, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, you find your sweet spot at some point, right? Like you go up and down, you're, you're, you're pushing too hard, then you get burned out, then you push too hard, you burn it. Eventually you kind of like settle in on the sweet spot of just how hard you can work. But uh, we know, we know how much the hard work pays off. Uh, we are going to be digging into this tournament. It is a 1650 on ACR that I shipped uh over the weekend. And me and Frank have been going through these GTO study sessions using the new range trainer pro uh post flop tool. Um, they've got lifetime memberships available now that you guys can check out exclamation lifetime in chat. And uh, right now they've got a bunch of solves in their database for about 30 big blinds. And most of this final table played about 20 to 30 big blinds deep. So I was just like, man, rather than just going through some of my old hands, why not just run through this final table and just find a bunch of really good theory spots? See what theory does, talk about like the exploit side and kind of dig into uh both sides of it. And I'm sure we're gonna see plenty of mistakes as always, uh, as we go through this, it's part of the good things of studying. But uh, we were fortunate enough to come back from short stacks multiple times on this FT and ship it. Um, we're gonna come in here Frank from a five uh five handed. It was a six max tournament. Uh, but we were really short for the first probably like 30 hands of this uh FT. And then uh found a double. And so I'm just gonna kind of run through, we'll talk about uh just kind of casually talk about spots until we find a GTO spot. And then we'll pull up the solver here on the left and see what we can uh find here. So let's dig in. Uh nine, seven, pretty happy fold there. Um, ace six suited. I feel like ICM wise, I think we can get away from this. What are your thoughts on this spot?
I mean, I don't, I, we just, we just got, we're 17 bigs, you know what I mean? I don't know if uh, if we're really good enough to, to get it in here. I don't know. Do we have any info on uh, on the guy that just shoved in with nine bigs?
Not really. All these guys had pretty similar stats and nobody was really aggressive or passive or out of line. Um, for me, the fact that we're really close to uh second and third in chips, kind of makes this more of a fold for me. You know, if second and third in chips all had like 40 bigs, um, I'm more willing to kind of take a chance, you know, in this spot. But like, we could, you know, steal the blinds twice and be second in chips. So I feel like we should be pretty tight here. Um.
Yeah, I, I, I like the fold here and just uh, especially in, in these shorthanded spots. I, I don't like calling off as much as I like uh just getting it in, you know, us doing RFI, you know?
Yeah. Um, I'm curious what you think about this fold. Um, my thoughts here, I, I think this is probably still an open, but like I've got a chip leader on the, on the button that I'm leery of putting pressure on us. And I've also got a big blind that can rejam on us. Um, I'm pretty sure Ryan in this spot would still say like, make them prove they can do it. Um, but I, I still don't get there sometimes in these spots. Is this fist pump open for you?
I, well, first off, uh, I really don't like this hand ever in any spot, but that's when we're deep stacked. Uh, but in this spot, uh, I kinda like it. I, I would like to see what uh the range trainer says about this. Because these are one of the hands that I, I personally don't like, just because I play mainly deep stack poker. Um, but in, when we're 17 bigs and this is something that I kind of struggle with. Um, I like, I do like getting in here, but I could be wrong.
I like uh, I like soccer stud's idea about limping here is an option for sure. Um,
I, I don't, I, I don't like limping just because of the uh, cause we limp and then the button can just, ruin our day, you know, just kind of.
Yeah, I mean, the, it depends on how aggressive or passive the button is. The more passive the button is, the more we can, you know, limp here comfortably. Um, uh, range trainer pro, I can't pull it up here, but I can, I mean, I can look at it here. I can just tell you like at 15 bigs, it has uh frequencies of jam, raise, not all in and limp. And at 20 big blinds, it's like uh, 85% raise, 15% limp. So both are definitely options here um that we can uh work with. Um, so I, I did end up folding here. I think sometimes I get a little bit too nitty in these spots. Um, if we had a really aggressive button or a really aggressive big blind, I like, I like raising better or limp, or I like folding better, but um in a vacuum against weaker players, we should probably just pile it this. Uh, this is the same thing here. Like this is, this is a little too tight. We could definitely limp this. Um.
I don't like, I just don't, I mean, I just cannot do.
We would have tripled up Frank.
Yeah, but I'd rather, I'd rather, I'd rather shove or raise, you know me, I, I, I like to shove there instead of just limping.
For sure, for sure.
I think we just get in spots like that. I think um especially playing against shove happy, all in festival spots. I think we limp and it's just, we just get shoved on a lot and we end up calling anyways.
I wonder if we've got the uh small blind versus big blind in here. We do not. So we can't look this spot up from a theory standpoint yet. Um, this is a happy defend for me. Uh, what do you like to do on this flop?
Get it in. I um, the, the small, okay, so they're betting like they're super small here. They just essentially probably hit the quarter pot button on ACR. Is it, is this an ACR tournament? Okay. They probably just hit a quarter pot button right here and uh, I mean, we've got, we've got backdoor equity. We've got the flush draw. Um, I don't think they have an ace. They're just not.
I actually kind of like a non-all-in raise here. Um, because I think.
Yeah, I, I, I see, I see now. I see you've got uh 14 bigs.
Well, I mean, shoving is not bad here. Shoving is definitely not bad here, but the, the, the reason I like a raise here exploitative is because I think one, it looks stronger and two, if they just come over the top like, and we think that they're playing pretty tight, we can just put them on an ace and then debate whether we like, we have options. Like we, we can, we can like click this back fold if we really want to, if we just think that we're in a horrible spot. I'm also fine, like maybe trying to get them to induce with a hand like eight, nine or something. Um, uh, I just did call, ooh, uh, I definitely like raise over call.
Actually, I, I don't really, I, I don't mind the call because we, if we call here and then they bet the turn, then we can shove.
Yeah. And I mean, obviously this turn card is just, it's not gin, but like now we're double gutted plus flush draw. We're just, we're just never folding.
And we're probably making the max off of uh villain.
Oh, check this out. So I, I did go with the clickback, but I went for it on the turn. See, this, this is, this is an exploitative play. I really enjoy because again, like for some reason, when you do this, people freak out. Like if I shove here, that he, he's just calling with any ace, but like, and I'm not saying he folded an ace here, but when you, when you put these, I've, I've seen this live too. When you put these small raises in, people just panic. They're like, oh my God, like he's just got it, right? Um, and he folds. Um, and, and that's nice. Like when we can pick up like fold equity here, like imagine he had a hand like, I don't know, eight, nine or eight, seven. And we jam and he just snap calls us, but like we put this kind of weird sick raise in and they just throw up and fold, you know? It probably is only.
He never had anything.
It's possible he didn't.
She or he villain never had anything to begin with.
It's possible he didn't, but my point is if five, if we get 5% extra fold equity in that spot with that non-all-in raise, it's worth it.
Right.
You know, um, it may not be a very large percent of the time, but I like, I like where that came down.
I think you played it well. I think I just, I like to shove too much.
Alright, let's see if this place, let's see if we can find this in. You like to shove too much. I mean, shoving is never gonna be bad. It's just a higher variance. Um, spot. Alright, we're gonna treat this, we're gonna treat this like uh cutoff versus big here. Uh, king, jack, four. And we are rainbow.
Do we have any reads on this villain here?
No, villain was, I mean, I can pull up the hood, but villain was uh, yeah, we had no stats at this point. So we've done some theory study in these spots. Um, villain's range is going to be a little bit tighter here than if he was in the big blind. So we wanted to give him a little bit of a tighter range. Um, but we're gonna be betting here a really large percentage of the time. We're just betting. Um, 86% of the time, none of our checks are really pure checks. We've got some like partial checks here with nines, eights, sevens, sixes, some partial checks with some of our like second pairs, um, some of our weaker gut shots, some of our suited aces that have backdoor flush draws. But like, we're pretty much just betting range here because we have, have some range advantage. Um, and ace eight suited specifically is uh, it's a 56% um, bet 42% check back. So we do have some check backs with this particular combo because of the fact that we've got a um backdoor flush draw. Um, so like if we were playing purely theory, like we would definitely wanna kind of like split this down the middle and just kind of like coin flip it. But in a final table like this, I think I'm just pure betting exploit and just going really small here.
For people that have never watched us before, they probably don't know this, but I love here like 99.999% of the time. Like I, I just feel like uh we are printing money.
Yep.
And this, it is, and we really are like if you uh, if you're just betting right here in position, um, c bet, it's over the long run, you're printing money. Even if they call you on the flop, uh, and you continuation bet the uh turn, I mean, and it's like, it's almost like you're making extra money when they just call you on the flop. They're like, alright, he's just c betting right here. So I'm gonna call the flop and then we're gonna see the turn, reevaluate. You know, you hear people say that all the time. I'm gonna see the turn and reevaluate. Imagine how many times you've said that to yourself over your poker career. I'm gonna, I'm gonna uh, I'm gonna peel one. People love to do that. I'm gonna peel the flop. I'm gonna see the turn and we're gonna reevaluate. Imagine how many times you've said that to yourself. And then imagine how many times other people have said that to themselves when they're playing. And it's almost like just extra money going into your stack. So you c bet here and then when they checked you on the turn, you c bet again and it doesn't have to be large, it can be small and you're just picking up extra chips, you know?
So, so naturally I checked back here Frank. God. Um, but I guess if you're gonna check back here, then you know, spike your three outer here on the turn. Um, so it's interesting. Let's go, let's go check here. And we're gonna put the ace of diamonds out on the board. This is gonna take a second to load because they've got the fair use delay on the site. So bear with me.
Now do I sound stupid? I said, I gave that little speech about how we should be betting there and then you check back. So.
I know, it's funny. So then I put the lead in for them. And this is our response here. We've got a lot of calls. We're calling 66%. Um, pretty much calling all of our, yeah, we're calling all of our ace six. We're never folding an ace here. We're actually interestingly enough, never folding a king, which is really cool. Um, and we're, are we folding any 10x? We're never folding a 10. Um, we don't really have any fours with them instead of fours. So like literally we're calling any pair here pretty comfortably. Um, we are, I'm just looking at, yeah. I mean, pretty much anything Broadway here. We're just, we're just non-believers. Our biggest folds here are just like, like bricked, like we have no, backdoor flush draws are bricked basically. Um, but yeah, we're just comfortably calling here, uh, which we did. River is a six, uh, offsuit six, go here, villain checks. And I'm really gonna be curious to see like, uh, and villain is supposed to be betting here a ton. This is, this is villain's thing. Uh, LFC, you can set the colors the same way you can in um, uh, the regular range trainer. You just go to your settings and you can set your colors. Um, so villain checks here, which villain really shouldn't be doing. And then here's our response. So we're definitely betting a ton, betting a ton of our aces uh with ace eight specifically. Um, see, it would have been this one. It's interesting. We've got, we're, we're supposed to go pretty large here. 75%. Uh, pot, cherishable girl. Thank you for the follow. Uh, we're supposed to go 75% pot here, 61% of the time. And then check 38% of the time. So this is a, this is one of the few check backs we have. Um, which is interesting. I'm not gonna try to uh.
What was the percentage of check back?
38 here.
Okay.
I mean, most of our aces were just pure betting. It's interesting that a seven is higher, a six is like a full bet. Some of these things in theory, like you're just not gonna be able to easily figure out why specifically ace eight is, is uh a partial check back. Other than there's just, you know, some amount of check backs we need here to protect, I guess, our check back range or something. I don't know. I, I, I'm getting too granular here, but um basically just a pure large bet here. Like we should be going like seven.
Guess a check raise. That's, I think that's why.
Well, so.
38% check back.
The thing is like, if we get check raised here going 75%, we're just folding, I think. Um, I don't know. It's interesting. I mean, it, from a, from an exploit standpoint, he just doesn't have any bluffs here. So if we get check raised here, it's just, we're, we're just folding. Um, from a theory standpoint, we can check. Um, let's see what I bet first. Oh God, I hate this check back. I've been way too passive here. Um, so let's just say we bet 75% like we were supposed to. And he goes all in, which is like the only basically uh bluff check raise he has. Uh, we're still calling 34% here. Um, we're calling a percentage of the time with all of our ace X except for ace deuce. Um, same with our off suits. Uh, we're actually calling, we're bluff catching with king, queen, which blocks the nuts. Um, king 10, which blocks the nuts. Uh, we've got partial calls with king, nine, eight. We're, we're calling pretty wide here Frank. Tens that blocks the nuts. Um, obviously we're calling with our sets.
Cause that's, that's what I'm interested in because uh, because I feel like we're, we're really not checking this back a lot. We're betting it and uh, and then if they do go over the top of us, I just wanted to know what we do or what range trainer says we should do. It's hard to fold.
And the reason, the reason we see all these partials is because we need to fold here a percentage of the time, but there's not that much difference between king, nine, king, eight, king, like all of these kings, like they're either ahead or behind. Like it's not like you're ahead with king seven, but behind with, or uh ahead with king nine, but behind with king seven, right? Like these hands are basically all the same.
Yeah, same with, same with ace five.
Yeah, like ace five and king nine are almost the same hand here because the bluffs that we're beating are like a lot of uh, you know, missed draws and whatnot. So um, so that's why you see the partial frequencies is because we still have to have an overall 34% call, but we can mix in a little bit of frequencies of this. Obviously, if you're, if you're getting into theory and stuff, you could just decide to call with your ace, queen and ace, jack and fold your ace, nine, ace, eight, ace, seven, ace, five. I mean, that's something you could do, but if you just wanna play by the letter of the law, then you were just gonna have some partial calls here. So I absolutely hate that I didn't bet this river. Um, I mean, I get like the idea probably in game was like, well, I just don't know that I'm getting called by much. But like, come on, we can target a king, we can target a jack, like.
Right.
We just, it, in these stakes, we don't expect people to be bluffing often enough for this to be anything but a simple value bet here.
The reason we are betting is because um, especially if they are a thinking player, I guess you could say. If they checked to us, we bet, a lot of people that, that check right there are gonna look at our bet like, okay, do they have it? Do they have an ace? Are they just trying to take it off of us since we checked, since we showed weakness? So that's something else you, you uh, you have to play upon as well.
He's got sevens, like with his literal hand, if I go like 1.8 bigs here, he's not folding sevens. It's almost like an insult. So like that's an extra two bigs we get.
Exactly. They're not folding.
So we just need to, we just, yeah, I definitely interesting to see how passive play this. I like this limp a lot. Um, yeah, I really like this limp. I don't see a lot of value to raising this particular hand here. Um, you certainly can, uh, but honestly, like at this particular stack bet.
Squeeze it, squeeze the uh, we're squeezing the small. I guess we're uh.
Like we don't mind playing this hand multi-way. So I don't really mind that we encourage the small blind to come along or the button to come along like, um.
I still, I still raise. I, I just can't uh, I just don't like limping too much there. I mean,
let's see.
I would like to see what uh range trainer says, cause uh, I actually had this discussion with uh, with my friend, uh, a friend of mine that's a pro and, and I said, so what are we doing with these small pairs? I mean, we, we raise with them, we raise with them, we get absolute no equity on the floor. We're like.
At, at 25 bigs, at 25 bigs, we're, we're partial limping threes, partial limping fours, partial limping sixes and just pure raising fives. Again, it's kind of weird. Um, and some of that just has to do with how it balances with some of the suited fives, fours and sixes and threes that we play. Um, but uh, yeah, uh, it's, this is more exploitative than anything. Um, let me. Let's just run this here. So we have a queen, jack, six flop. And we're going this one right here. Okay. Oh, we gotta wait 10 seconds for the fair use. So whether you raise or limp, we're in the same spot at this point, which is, are you stabbing at this with fives?
I mean, if we raised with it, then I think we have to, right? To uh continue our story. We have, we have a range advantage, I guess.
Yeah. So it's kind of interesting here. Um, this is really interesting actually. Uh, looks like all of our pocket pairs that are two unders to the board are just kind of like split down the middle. Um, tens are a 56% check, nines 52, eights 38, seven 39, fives 51, fours 26, threes are uh 15%. So it's kind of a, a mixed bag here in terms of um, check backs. Uh, overall, we are c betting uh 25%, 53% of the time on this board. Uh, we're going 67% pot 19% of the time and then we're going 100% pot 7% of the time. Um.
Wow.
Well, it's a lot of.
I'm sorry, you said 7% of the time. Okay.
Yeah, it's like our over pairs, our aces and kings wanna have a frequency of really big. And like our ace, king and ace, queen and king, queen. Cause these are hands that like, we can get in on the turn comfortably. And uh, by going really, really big here with the SPR that we've got, we just allow ourselves to like blast off on turn. Even when there's like, you know, sketchy turns, you know, a 10, a king, so on and so forth. So uh, we're kind of just like pot committing ourselves and also just max denying equity to our opponents. Um, and we also just get a chance to like snap call them off if they shove hands like king 10 in our face, right? Um, so like a lot of those hands that we have really strong value, but this is a really, really wet board. They're just gonna go really, really big with. Um, we do have some bluffs uh that are similar, like ace five off with some of the heart blockers. Um, looks like a little bit of a queen 10 here has a little shade. Uh, nine, eight suited has a little shade. Um, but with these small pairs, like it looks like we can do a little bit of everything. They're kind of all like multi, like the fives, fours, the threes especially have all four bet sizings. Um, again, I don't know that we have to get that fancy and be like, oh, 3% of the time here, I'm going pot with my pocket fives, but um, I think this is just a spot where like a little bit of penalty dependent, but we can, we can go really exploitative here. And this is a spot, I mean, with this particular pot, since we limped, it's kind of moot. Like I would just one big blindness. And this would be one of the arguments for um limping is that like for the price of a min raise, I get to do a c bet. Um, that would be my biggest argument is I get to, for the cost of a min raise, which is very likely to be defended by the big blind, especially against like okay-ish regs. Like now I just get to stab and just hope that I can get like sevens or eights or nines to fold type thing. Um, or maybe a hands like ace, nine, ace, eight, uh, and just equity deny. So it, it is cheaper to do it. Uh, if we had been raised though, and this, let's just say there was an extra two bigs, it's like 4.98. I don't even mind like minning this flop or going like 1.1 or 1.2 against weaker opponents, just going really, really small here. Um.
We could even check back, even if we raise, we could probably even check back the flop here, but this is a bad, this is a bad turn for us.
Yeah. Yeah, when we go, let's just double check it, but when we go check, turn is uh same suit four. And let's just see. And then villain bets uh, let's see what we're supposed to do. Yeah, fives are like 50% call, 50% fold. Um, and the reason fives are 50% call here is because we have to do some bluff catching here against opponents like ace of hearts type accent type hands, but um, we're just not expecting them to have that many bluffs here uh in reality.
We did this, I think we did this in another uh trainer one time. And it was a call, all, it was a call all the way down. And I was like, why are we calling all the way down? And even in the trainer, it said we lost, but it's just a percentage of the time we're bluff, we're bluff catching.
Yeah.
So.
Yep. Yeah. Cause I mean, you just, you have to uh, you have to have um.
They, they could have just had a, you know, a dime in there. You know what I mean? So.
I, I pulled a Frank here.
Great.
Um, this is kind of a weird combo here because like generally the rule of thumb is like, if I can get shoved on by worse, then I want to open and not jam here. Um, if there's a potential that I can get better to fold, then I prefer jamming over opening. With this particular opponent, with how kind of passive I had seen them become, I kind of leaned towards like, I don't think he's gonna come over the top with worse. And maybe I can get him to fold a hand here like ace, jack. Um, certainly can get him to fold a hand like king, queen, which is kind of good for us in the grand scheme of things. So I just elected to shove. I think I'd probably get yelled at for this though. Um, what are you doing here?
Uh, I think, well, I mean, we got a lot of bigs to be just shoving right there, but um, I think old school poker would say this is fine, but the way.
It's gonna be profitable. Um, but it's probably suboptimal in the grand scheme of things. Cause there is gonna be a, a percentage of the time, we just open here, get defended, c bet, take it down, win a nice pot and we're missing. Cuz there is gonna be a, a, a percentage of the time, we just open here, get defended, c-bet, take it down, win a nice pot, and we're missing out on that profit. By just jamming here.
And we jam, they wake up with ace-jack, or.
Then they fold. Uh, I don't think we have to, I don't think we have to study this one too hard, like. Okay, so here's a good spot.
I like this one, yeah.
Here's a good spot, so we've got, uh, button. Versus big blind here. Uh, we're gonna go, what was the flop? The flop was king, not dain deuce. Now, after our last study session, Frank, I, um. I started c-betting a like, a lot of these mid pairs, like I, I've had a tendency in the past against like. Average-ish opponents to just check back a lot of my second pairs, cuz I'm like, I gotta protect my checkback range, gotta pick some hands to be there, second pair seems like a good hand. But we went through so many spots in our last session where like. It was just going quarter pot with our second pairs, you know, and just, and it was like pretty consistent, so. Um, I'll be interested to see here, this is a king-nine deuce rainbow.
I, I wanna see what it says. I'm very interested.
We gotta wait ten seconds for the, uh. Fair use here, so if you guys are new to the site, uh, because this is like a. Database of solver, uh, hands for particular spots, they put a delay in when you do searches in there. Just to help deter people from like trying to use this in-game. Um, they also track all of the actual, uh, searches that are done, so that a site could query and see. Hey, you're doing all these searches the same time these hands took flight, like it would give them the opportunity to. To check against cheating, which I think is really cool, but it gives us some delays that we have to do here, so. Uh, villain, yeah, villain's gonna check here vast majority of the time. And yeah, as expected, we're betting twenty-five percent pot seventy-seven percent of the time. Um, and we're checking twenty-two percent of the time, uh, particularly interesting here, we didn't do any button spots. We have almost no large bets here. It's either bet twenty-five percent or check, so that's a really interesting new thing, I'll be curious to see if that. Carries over, the only real like big bet we have is aces. Um, where we're betting a hundred percent pot, seven point eight percent of the time. Um, which is not a large amount, uh, with. With our particular hand here, we're mixing. Um, we're going basically, uh, let's see. Sixty percent of the time we're betting a quarter pot, um, and forty percent of the time we're checking. So, yeah, I, I, I think I'm fine with this bet, um, I think I actually went thirty-three percent here, um. Which I'm sure this is gonna be a debate at some point, because a lot of people, when they run solvers on flop. They use thirty-three, sixty-seven, and a hundred, and our Range Trainer Pro uses twenty-five, um. I have no doubt in my mind, they have a good reason for using twenty-five, but I haven't, I haven't had a chance to ask what it is.
That's, yeah, that's something we need to ask, but, but here's the thing is, um. You know, it was thirty-three percent was the premium bet size for so long. And that comes from the old card runners days.
Right.
And, um, I think it's just been. You know, if you can bet thirty-three percent and get it done, why not bet twenty-five percent and get it done? You're, uh, I, I'm, I'm assuming that's the reason, um.
Well, the, the meta game that I wanna ask about is like, if, if RTP is the only site running solvers with twenty-five percent on flop. How is our bet gonna be perceived by better players?
I started doing twenty-five percent in twenty-nineteen, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, just as a.
Exploit, right?
An exploit.
That's what I'm saying, though, is like.
And it worked, it worked.
Oh, for sure.
So, uh, like, I, I, I just went away from the thirty-three percent, so I was. Going either twenty-five percent or seventy-five percent, or, or pot, you know, like.
Yeah.
I never, I just eliminated thirty-three percent from, from my, uh.
But the, the, the interesting dynamic for me is if, if I go, you know, if I've got ape styles, if I'm up against ape styles.
Right.
And I bet twenty-five percent pot here instead of thirty-three percent, is he gonna interpret that as an exploitative bet? And respond differently, or is he gonna interpret it as a theory bet, you know, like? And, and again, that probably doesn't matter in the grand scheme of things, like I'm probably way too, uh, granular about the whole thing.
Rob, in the grand scheme of things. You're going to react to their, to what they, to their reaction, so it's not like. We bet twenty-five percent, they raise us, oh, we gotta fold, you know, um. Of course, if you're playing against ape styles.
Yeah.
He's, he's gonna try to use and abuse us, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, we adjust.
Yeah, it probably doesn't matter too much, um, so we bet villain calls.
How many times have you played against ape styles this year?
None, thank God, but I don't play, I don't, I don't play the stakes he plays, so, uh, that's, that kind of helps.
You, yeah, well, that, that, that would help, yeah. But.
Uh, and I, I, I kind of feel.
I love ape styles, so we're not talking bad about.
Oh, no, he's a great guy, I, I, I feel like if I'm playing ape styles, I, I, ape styles, I need you to call me and have a little conversation with me about game selection. Okay, Rob, we, we need, we need to talk about game selection here a little bit, um, cuz you're probably in the wrong games.
If you're playing against ape styles, it's probably a good thing, that means, uh, your bankroll's had a huge boost and we're like, alright, good, you're playing against ape styles. Not, oh crap, you're playing a, against ape styles.
Alright, so, here we go, the turn is a six of spades. Puts a spade draw out there, we do have the ten of spades in our hand, um. And at this point, uh, ten-nine off, you guys can see here is a pretty pure checkback, um. The particular combo we have. Uh, yes, it's, it's eighty-five percent check, it's pretty much eighty-five percent check across the board, um. Hands that do not have a hard in it have a slightly higher double barrel. Simply because, uh, they can get called by more flush draws. Uh, they're not blocking the flush draws that we want our opponents to have flush draws, and it's interesting, the hands that don't block the flush draws. Are going pure, uh, sixty-seven percent pot here. Cuz they're just equity denying, so, uh, but even those, like it's twenty-six percent bet, uh, sixty-seven percent pot. Seventy-five percent check, so we're, we're, we're checking here a vast majority of the time, because we actually have the ten spades in our hand, we're checking at the highest frequency. So that's something to think, kind of think about in the future, is when flush draws come in the turn and we have. Showdown value and we block some of the draws that are out there. Um, we're just gonna be wanting to protect that showdown value more and bet less. Um, whereas when they have more draws, we wanna bet more and deny equity and get value. Um, so that's a really cool thing to see here, so this is just pretty much a pure checkback, I assume e- even exploitatively in-game, you're just checking back here it done.
Min.
You're going min. I mean, that's savage. The problem is this board is so uncoordinated, right? Like if this was like a. King-ten-eight board and we had jack-ten, it'd be a little bit different, right? But like with a king-nine deuce. The problem here is like, what's floating us? Like, really, we have to hope he has ace highs, cuz like, he probably doesn't have a lot of. Like, he doesn't have a lot of deuce X. A fair amount of his nine X beats us, and all of his king X be- beats us, right? Um, sixes just got there, like, we're not getting a big bet size called with sevens or eights, certainly not with fives, fours, or threes. So yeah, like you'd almost have to go min here to double barrel for like pure value, um. Which also leads to like potential like, uh. You know, people just getting, you, you, you incentivize them to come over the top, um, with a lot of hands, so. Uh, and, and the other thing we have to realize is, let's just say he does have a king here, the value to checking back and having a free card to spike a ten or a nine is really valuable. Um, versus betting and getting shoved on here, so.
Yeah, I like that argument, I like that argument for checking back right there.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, again, I think some of this is. And so I, literally, I'm gonna do the wrong thing in every hand in this hand history, this is why we study. Um, yeah, I don't like this.
I don't, I don't even know if that's the wrong thing, though, I mean, yeah, it says.
It's just, what are we trying to get called by?
Well.
Like, I don't even think my bet size gets eights and sevens to call, like I need to go like one point six. If I'm trying to get those hands to call.
I think we are getting called by eights and sevens.
Man, I don't know. That, that card doesn't change the board, like. I think this is a little bit of my old school leaking out, which is going back to the assassinator days, where it was like, oh man, if we bet turn. And he calls, he's gonna check river, and then we don't have to, like, we get a free showdown on river, and I don't have to face a river bet.
No, listen, I'm so glad you brought this up, listen, I'm so glad you brought this up. Assassinato said himself, okay, these are words, straight out of his mouth. You can never, like, if you never three-barreled. In your entire poker career. You could still be a winning poker player.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, um, and.
Although, although, um, three streets of value is three streets of value.
But this is, this is, this is a bad habit I have, where from like the younger days, where it was like, I just know when I bet turn, they're checking river. And so it's like, if I bet turn here, then I get a free showdown on the river, and I don't have to mess with anything, whereas if I check here, I pretend. Uh, potentially have to face a river bet, and then I have to make a tough decision. And so in my old days, I would just always take this spot to avoid the tough decision on the river, and that's just not a good strategy.
Buying the river, is that what he said?
Yeah, buying the river, yep, buying the river, yep, exactly. Um, because like, we just need to get comfortable with these spots, Elsie's absolutely right, he says he would definitely bet ace-nine, cuz we can target worse nines. And you could see here, literally, ace-nine, king-nine, like as you go down your kicker, like the frequency with which we're betting goes down. Significantly, um, ace-nine's a pure bet, king-nine's actually a checkback sometimes, because it's top two pair and we're blocking a lot of the hands we want to call us. Um, queen-nine's partial, jack-nine's partial, but once you get down to ten-nine, it really starts to dip. Um, so, yeah, I think we just need to check this back here and just be comfortable facing. A, a river bet, so I'm actually going to, well, let's see, what did he do here? Yeah, he checked, I guess we'll just run it as we played. Um. I'm learning a ton from this, I, I, I'm telling you, like, I'm really excited. About the implications of digging into this stuff and talking about the theory and the exploits at the same time. Because it's just, I'm, I'm, I'm picking up so much, and there's so much to pick up, so it's not like, oh, I've mastered GTO now, we've done this twice, Frank, we're set. Like, I, there's, there's infinite amounts of studying to be done here, but just.
We could do this every day.
Oh, for sure.
Learn every day.
The growth is taking place, though, is just, I'm, I'm, I'm really enjoying it. So here's the funny thing, alright, so after we bet on turn when we shouldn't have, now as played when we get to the river. Look what we're doing with all of our nine-X.
Look, bet, bet, bet.
That is so weird, I mean.
I told somebody this, hey, listen, I told somebody this, uh, yesterday, I said. If you wanna, if you wanna play like me, all I gotta do is do one strategy, bet, 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 that's all you do.
I mean, if I click on the square-sized proportional, we're not supposed to be here a lot of the time, like, we're, we're not here very often, so like. You gotta factor that in, but yeah, since we did happen to get here, we just get to bet this river and, um. Is RTP saying bet with nine-X except ace-nine, that is a bluff, so. Yeah, I think we're turning our hand into a bluff here, um. Uh, obviously not with king-nine, but like queen-nine, um. Queen-nine, where we do not have the queen of hearts. Uh, that's really big here, um. It's actually overbetting pot, so queen-dye is betting one hundred and fifty percent of the pot, fifty-six percent of the time. Um, if you've got queen of diamonds, nine of hearts, queen of diamonds, nine of clubs is seventy-two percent overbet pot. So it's turning a lot of these, uh, second pairs into overpot. Bluffs, and basically, it's spots where we're not blocking, um. We're not blocking the high-end hearts, which is really interesting. I never know in these spots, it's like, do we wanna block hearts or do we not wanna block hearts? We don't want them to have a heart flush. But at the same time, we really kind of want them to have a single heart, I guess, no, I don't know, like, I guess, I guess I don't know, to be honest, like. I would think we would wanna block hearts here if we're bluffing. But this is, this is like pretty aggressive. It does get more aggressive with the less hearts, like, jack of spades, nine of clubs here. Sorry, I gotta remember we're using different suits, so the jack-nine that doesn't block any of these spades is a pure, uh, hundred fifty percent pot bet.
Hundred, yeah. So, I mean, so, we definitely need to bet the ten-nine as well, right? I mean.
So, yeah, so LSC says, I assume cuz they didn't raise our tiny bet in the turn, they assume our opponent doesn't have too many flushes, we can look, so if we go back. To our opponent's spot, um. Yeah, the, the, the flushes are really low. They do have some. But there's not a lot of flush draws. Yeah, so the way the RTP works, sorry, um, when you put the flops in, it gives you each type of toned flop. So it'll give you a monotone, two-tone, three-tone, but it doesn't have all of the actual suits, it, it just gives you specific suits. And so I have to remember, I apologize, I'll get better about this, I remember that the suits in RTP sometimes won't match the suits that are on our table, and I have to adjust. Um. So, like, we would be betting here, but this is a pure bluff. This, this is not a bet for value. Um, and that's very evident in our sizing, so like, realistically here. Like, this would be a spot where we would just be like jamming basically. Um, and turning our hand into a bluff, which I'm just not gonna do here. Um, and look at that, we did get two streets of value from fours, which is pretty absurd. Um, I wouldn't expect to get two streets of value there from fours, but.
Bro, that, I, I, I feel like that happens more, like, a lot, because. Okay, they just think that we're just betting it, you know what I mean, we're just, like, we're obligated to bet, so.
Well, it's, it's a very specific type of opponent that shows up here with fours, like actually live. I would like that turn bet more, because live poker, you know, people just hate to fold. They're like, I have a pair I have to call, and like, in that type of mentality player, I definitely like it more. Um, online, you're gonna run into that some, but it's not gonna be as big a percentage of the player pool, so. Like, I love this line better live than I do online, I think you have to be kind of careful, or at least want some sort of info like, oh, hey, this person's a station. They're just gonna call down with any pair to feel good about barreling this, um.
Live, you, you bet, you bet river there, and you end up getting called by like.
Oh, live, you bet river there, and you get called by like, Jack deuce suited, like it's, it's hilarious. Um. We can't do multi-way in the sim unfortunately, and.
I was about to ask that, I was about to ask that.
Yeah, there's, there's no multi-way. I remember this spot, like, I was like, oh, I could raise here.
Here, I'd like to see what's going on here, where, how did we start?
So this is a multi-way, thi- this was, yeah, it was, um.
We're in the big blind.
Open from, uh, cutoff, button flats, we're in the big blind, we're definitely gonna see a flop. Um, I got called by worse than Jack on Iggy, that's absurd, I, I think, uh, like. You could make an argument here for like raising this, I, the reason I don't like raising this. Is he's using about thirty-three percent, forty, actually forty percent pot here into two people. So, off this stack depth going forty percent into two people, I feel like this is stronger. Um, and, uh, I, we also have a guy behind that can just like rejam here with percentage of the time, so. I think this is just fine as a fold. Um, if this was like nine-eight-four, like, we just have to go with it, but I think in this particular spot. Um, and notice, by the way, we didn't talk about this, but everybody's, like, stacked depths are really similar now, so the ICM is just. Wild, cuz everybody's basically got the same stack.
Insane ICM.
And unfortunately, we don't get to see what they had.
Um. Probably, I mean, looked like an eight, but what do I know?
Fine with a limp here, stab, check, give up, uh, seems pretty straightforward to me. Uh, this is, this is how you win tournaments, Frank, you get aces and you get guys to shove king-nine on you.
Fine, yeah.
And now we're three-handed. Um, this is funny, um, like, pretty standard, I'm gonna like, I'm gonna raise pretty. Pretty standard, I'm gonna like, I'm gonna raise pretty like loose here, uh, blind versus blind and we just get limp trapped. Ah, no worries, Miss Ginger. Um.
Hi, Ginger.
So none of these blind versus blind spots will be able to study in the, uh, thing because they don't have it unfortunately, but we'll be able to study button versus big. Um. You like this blocker bet here?
Oh.
No?
No, I, no, I just say kapow, you gotta, you gotta straight.
Yeah, we, we gotta bet this. We can't let, we can't let like deuce and diamonds get there for free.
Oh, yeah.
Um, multi-way here. So again, we can't run any multi-way sims, but the way that I think about this spot is. We have a really good raw equity hand that's super vulnerable, so I just wanna go really big here.
I don't mind going big. I mean, um, I actually wouldn't even mind betting pot right here. So, I mean. What, what do we, what are we fearing here or anything?
Um, I mean, I, I don't know that there's a lot of difference between going two-thirds pot and pot in terms of like fold equity or anything. Um. This should fold out the same amount of time, like using both bet sizes.
I, I, I wouldn't think to go pot to fold out. I'm talking about.
For value?
Value, yes.
Maybe.
Uh, when I bet bigger, I mean, I'm not betting bigger to fold people out, I'm. Cause people are more likely to call a lot of time. That's what I run into.
I, I think they're gonna shove all of their like flush draws and like their ten eights no matter what. Um, they're obviously shoving all their value hands no matter what. I guess it depends on like what you're calling and folding, right? The biggest challenge with like going pot here is like if you get jammed on, are you, are you just snap folding?
No. I don't, I don't like folding at all. Right here. I mean, what was the action pre-flop? We raised?
Just men raise, call, call, yeah.
Um, I mean, I think if we're betting three-quarter pot there. Uh, I don't think we're, we're betting it to fold. You know, I mean, we do have a lot of bigs. I mean, we are kinda, we, um.
Yeah, it's kinda tough because.
We still have the chip lead. I mean, it, yes, if they shove all in, I mean, we gotta fold.
Twenty big blinds, we could get it in, but that, at thirty-one, it, it's.
Thirty-one, we could just, we could just fold it, but, um. But if they check raise, I mean, we're, we're probably not folding. It's not a, we're not betting three-quarter pot there to fold. I wouldn't think, I mean.
That's what I was gonna say about betting pot. If you're going pot, you have to call. Like, I, if you're not gonna call the rejam, then I prefer going smaller. Um, I still don't think I'm probably calling a jam here just because I can fold and still be second in chips. And I can find a better spot. Um, the better our opponents are, the more I'm bet calling here. One, because the more likely they are to have bluffs and two, because the edge is smaller. But like, calling here on a jam is gonna be very high variance. So if like you think your opponents are really, really bad. Then I think we can just avoid the high variance spot. If you think they're really, really good, then you wanna fist pump, get it in. Does that kinda make sense?
Right, that's, that's what I was about to say because it sounded like you, uh, it sounded like you said the opposite a while ago, but.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
Yeah. No, if, if we're playing against better opponents and they check raise right there, then. I think we can just jam in.
Pretty easy stab here with the open ender, take it down.
We're getting some good flops.
Yeah. Alright, so this is one we can study, button versus big blind.
Cat Mandu says these days, small blind limps seem to be stronger than small blind raises. I think, uh, people are doing more small blind limbs these days. Because they're, uh, they're just, like we were talking about earlier, the, the small blind shoves are just not happening as much as they used to. Um, we are realizing that, or what's really been going on is. Whereas in earlier years when people had a fifteen big blind stack and they just shoved. With fifteen bigs, now they're men raising and limping with fifteen bigs. There are people that are, you know, they get down to ten bigs or even eight bigs before they're. Shoving, you know?
Yeah.
And, uh, that's, that's what we're seeing a lot of. That's why more people are limping than they are. Raising in the small blind because they're just, uh. Cause they do have these solvers.
People are getting better.
People are getting better. Um, they are worried about SPR and, uh. That's, that's what's going on, uh, you know, the, uh, the days of I've got fifteen bigs and I need to shove. This right here or fold, shove or fold, shove or fold, you know? Now they're raising, now they're limping. Now they're limping jack nine on the button.
Yep. So it's interesting, this is the second button versus big blind spot we've studied. And second time we've seen this where there is almost no large sizings. Um, so this is, it, this is a good trend. If this continues, just knowing that a lot of these like thirty, thirty-five big blind pots. Button versus big blind, we're just gonna use almost exclusively, uh, twenty-five percent pot. And again, the biggest, uh, over bets are just the over pairs. So this is really easy to kind of remember. Um, we'll have to learn at some point like how these bluffs work, like this king four suited. I don't know how we get to king four suited and king three suited on this board. Um, I guess because we're like blocking king ten and then like ace three, ace four. I don't know, this is really weird, but like. Just mainly like, just knowing we can just kind of pure bet like twenty-five percent a majority of the time from a theory standpoint, button versus big blind's pretty cool. Um, it, king jack off is actually one of the higher frequency check backs. Um, and I, again, I'm not entirely sure why because it's, it's across the board. It's not super differentiated by suit here. Um. Yeah, it's really not very differentiated by suit. If I go to this king jack suited, it's same. It, it, the suit doesn't really matter here too much. Um, so that's interesting to me. I'm not really sure why that is.
What's the percentage on check back?
Uh, it is about, it, it varies from like forty-two to fifty percent. Um. The, uh, the highest frequency bets are the one where the king is the king of diamonds. Um, all of our king of diamonds combos have, uh, sixty-nine to seventy percent bet. Um, which is really interesting. I guess because we unblock backdoor flush draws, right? But, uh, like even our lowest combo here of betting. Um, is the king of hearts, uh, jack of. Um, spades, that's a forty-two percent c-bet, fifty-three percent check back. With a sliver of betting large. Um, so yeah, I'm, I, I, I'm not sure to be honest, why this particular. Hand has such a higher check back compared to so much of the others, but again, like. From a theory standpoint, like not getting to a check back here with your specific combo of king jacks, not the end of the world. Um, thirty percent of our, uh, check back, we're checking back here thirty percent of the time and so much of our check back is just like these really weak. Kings, uh, you know, suited hands that have a back door, like, this is where most of our check backs are gonna come from, so. Like, if you screw up king jack, it's not the end of the world here. Uh, but it is an interesting thing to note.
Very strange. I feel, I, I, I just assumed we would bet. There like majority of the time.
Yeah. We do bet, we get called, which is cool. Oh, this is cool. I, I love spots like that, like. When we're running through theory stuff and like I get a turn card like this, I get excited because I'm like, ooh, we get something juicy. You know, if the turn's a deuce, it's like, we pretty much know what we're doing, but this is, this is definitely an interesting card. So let me get the card, the suit correct here. We know we're betting, the question is how much? Um. Opponent checks. And here we go. So king jack is just like absolutely pure. Um. What are we doing here? This is. Pot. We're going pot here, Frank.
That's what I said all the way.
We're going pot, baby. Don't, don't, don't screw around with this, uh, oh, wait, no, 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 uh, no, no, take it back, take it back. I lied, I lied. I see the pot size, the pot size and the pot percentage gets me confused. It's, it's two-thirds pot. It's just two-thirds pot is a hundred percent, it's a hundred units here. So it says bet one-on-one, which is basically two-thirds pot. So, uh, cause the pot size is one fifty. Uh, the way that RTP does it. So my bad, scratch what I said, but thi- this is a large size bet, that makes sense. Um, we're almost pure betting large here. Um, we're only betting small three percent of the time and that's not again, like, when you see something that's small, um. The only thing you really need to pay attention to is right here, these kings. Uh, and you'll see this a lot where this top set will go, will size down. Because it's just so strong and it blocks so much that we just don't need to go very big here. Um.
Yeah, anytime we have some crazy strong hand, it's always sized that, sized down and range turn.
Yeah.
Like when, when we were talking about the, the, uh, we were flopping straight flush draws.
That being said, please don't bet small here with your top set against ninety-nine percent of the competition. Because, um, your bad players are never folding jack ten, queen ten. Um. You know, any of that. Um, so. I, I think, I think, I think like most of the time, we're just gonna bet this big like everything else. Uh, but again, if you got ape styles across the table.
King ten might even like check shovel on us maybe.
And, and the biggest reason you're going small here too is because we allow our opponents to have more check raises then, that we just get to like fist pump stick it in against.
Right.
Uh, and then we get to fold some of these like queen five suited, jack five suited, queen eight suited, you know, just queen eight off, like some of these really weak things. Um, but yeah, this is just a pure big bet. Uh, we actually did go pot, so that, that's gonna make Frank happy. Um. And I'm assuming opponent folded, he did. Cool.
Yeah, I'm not betting pot to fold out villain, I'm betting pot to get. Get call, get more chips in there.
Take it down.
What I'm trying to work on, I'm trying to work on with this. That's, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
You know?
Queen nine gets three bets.
Sinners go to church.
This, this, this is a fun spot, Frank.
Oh, geez. Eighteen, twenty-six. Hmm, three-handed, I, I, I think we just gotta. Gotta get it in there, right? I mean, I hate ace jack.
I, uh, my thought in game is we are chip leader. Um. If these guys give chips to each other, it, we can't lose from an ICM perspective. But if we get this in here and we're wrong, or we lose a flip, we lose a lot. And like.
It's ruined.
While like busting this guy and having, you know, sixty bigs does give us a two and a half to one chip lead and that's somewhat significant. Um, losing this pot and going to like third out of, three out of three is pretty, pretty, pretty disastrous for us, so. Um, I, this would be an interesting one to pull into ICMizer. I don't have the stream set up, so I can pull that up right now. It's something I need to add, but, um. This would definitely be an interesting ICM spot to look up, but my gut is, uh. This is probably. Th- this is probably a, if, if opponents are playing perfectly, it's probably an ICM call, but we know they're not. So I think if you factor in like, like real-time ranges for what these guys are actually playing, I think we can just fold here. Uh, and look for a better spot. Um, that would, that's my gut. And, uh, we could have just, uh, gotten absolutely destroyed. Um, I, I think, oh, if we get it in, I don't think he's calling with ace ten. I think he might just like sidefold and go for the ladder. Um, the good news is we got heads up and. Now that we're heads up, we won't be able to study any of these spots. I guess we could do it as button versus big blind. We could, we could study these spots actually. Um.
I would like to, to study this one if we can.
Well, I, it's not gonna be quite the same, like, we're, we're, we're gonna be a little bit off here because the button ranges are gonna be different than the small blind ranges. Um, oh yeah, we would have won the tournament. Yeah, good point. I forgot about the counterfeit. Um. So this isn't gonna be exact, but we can kind of treat it, uh, similarly, I guess here.
Yeah, Rob, follow the winning hand. You fold the tournament winning hand. Good for you.
Oh, well. Uh, uh, that, that really sucks then. I wish we would have won this tournament. Oh wait, we did. Um. What happened to my, oh, it's because of the delay. The delay borked the, uh, overlay here.
Oh, did you not realize that, that he was counterfeited?
I, I went through it so quick, I didn't, I didn't see it. I just saw the two pair on the flop. Um. So villain checks, we are just pure betting here. And this is, this we're just gonna see again and again and again, like these paired boards, like these, these, uh. Basically these three-suited, uh, flops where the board's paired, it's so static. And we have such range advantage that we're just literally gonna bet range here. Like this is the easiest theory spot in the world. You're just betting quarter pot with your entire range, don't even think about it on these paired boards. Um. And, and just take it down. Now I would be curious to see. Let's put in a flop like five-five deuce and let's just see if it changes. Like something that kind of like gives the opponent more five X. I've, my gut is Frank, it's not gonna change because, um, we sell more over pairs. So even though they have more five X, we have, we have all of our aces, kings, queens, like, and they're capped on all those. So I think this is still gonna be the same result. That's my gut. We gotta wait for the fifteen seconds to kick through. I messaged High Hands the other day. I'm like, dude, I need literally every situation for Range Trainer Pro solved in the next like week. I just wanna be able to look everything up.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure you got a good answer.
Yeah, he's like, um, he's like, that's not gonna happen. Okay, so it's interesting. So with the five-five deuce. We do have some more check back here. Um, but it's all like small partial frequency. Um, we're still betting a majority of our range and most of the partial frequency is like. Uh, ace X check backs and then I, again, I don't know why. Uh, these are here, this probably has to do with ranges and like they don't have hands like ten-five suited, queen-five suited, but they do have. King-five suited and they do have seven-five suited, so like we're blocking, we're, we're unblocking or sorry, we're blocking some of the five X that they can't, or we're un. We have cards that do not block their five X. It's so hard to speak. Um. So I think that this is, this is kind of where, where it is, but we're still betting eighty percent of the time. So that's, that's interesting there. Okay, we did bet and take it down. Uh, I don't think that spot's too terribly interesting. This one is, let's look at this one here. Call bottom pair on this board. This was a weird hand if I remember right, too. Um, so we're gonna go rainbow here. We're doing so many searches, the fair use delay is actually going up, like it's like twenty seconds now, so I apologize for the little delay here, but they do wanna make sure we're not.
RTA.
Yep. Now, part of the problem here is, no, we do have some deuce nine suited, okay, cool. I was worried we weren't gonna have deuce nine suited in, well, no, that's big blind. I wonder if we do, yeah, we don't have deuce nine suited here. Um, so this is gonna be a little bit tricky to see. Cause we just don't have this hand in our range, um. I guess we'll treat this like king deuce suited, which kinda sucks.
It's, uh, we don't.
I mean, on this board, well, I, the good thing is we're betting range here, so it doesn't matter too much. Um. But yeah, this is just an exploitative raise that we're gonna do and deuce nine suited would actually show up if we could do small blind versus big blind. Uh, but because we have to do button versus big blind, it, it doesn't. Uh, but because we had to do button versus big blind, it, it doesn't. Um, and villain raises, so. Uh, let's put a raise in here and just kind of see. Yeah, we're just not folding.
Think we have to, yeah, we, we need to peel right here.
King, King deuce suited is a pure call here, so I gotta assume that nine deuce suited is as well. Uh, and we did make the call. That feels good. Um, so kudos there.
Feel like this is a bad, this is a bad turn.
This feels like a horrific turn. This is, this feels like an absolutely horrific Kern. Um, villain checks. Which villain's actually supposed to check here a huge percentage of the time. I would have thought villain would have bet here a ton after the check raise, so this is really interesting. Um, villain bets all of their Jack X and then like has some sexy bluffs down here with their gunshots. To, uh, balance it out. That's kind of really cool. Um. It's really interesting that they choose the fi- well, no, it's actually, it makes a lot of sense, right? Like. We should, we should bluff five, four and five, three over like King ten, cause King ten has showdown value. So this is, this is a really sexy bluff down here that I don't know that I would get to in this spot, but that's, that's kind of cool to see. Um.
Wait, do we? I mean, don't we have, if he checks here, don't we have to bet it? I mean.
So when we, when he checks, King deuce suited is a pure check back here. Uh, so again, I gotta assume nine deuces as well. Um, we do stab a fair amount of the time here, forty three percent, uh, small, ten percent large. Um, but there's just better candidates. Uh, obviously all of our Jack X is betting. We're actually betting a lot of our broadways here, uh, minus like our pure, uh, pocket pairs. Uh, quads bets here, which is interesting, cause this is again, something we see a lot in theory. Um, I just don't, I, you know, like you have quads, you're like, oh, let him catch up. And theory just pure small bets, quads a lot in spots. Um. So no, this is, this is a pure check back. In game, we checked back as well. And the river is a four and I think we just checked this down. Yeah. And he just, he, and see, this, this is a point, listen, this is so important. This is so important. Um. This is so important. When you see this happen, okay? When you see this happen, go back through this hand. I remember, I remember watching this and going, holy shit. Like, this check raise is one of two things, okay? This check raise is one of two things. It is A, a really bad check raise. Or B, a really good check raise, okay? Um, and, and it comes down to like what our opponent's thought process is because. When they check raise this flop with five, ten of clubs, um. They're either doing this on principle. They're like, I'm just gonna check raise you because I don't think you have it. There's an ace on the board and you're batting small, so I'm just gonna check raise you. Or they're doing it because they realize they have backdoor straight and flush draws and they're unblocking a lot of our C bet folds. Right? So like, this is like a very polarizing check raise. And when I see this, like I immediately take note of something like this. Like this is one of the best things you can do. Late in tournaments against opponents, when you're trying to figure out what kind of opponents you're against is. What are their check raises? What are their bluffs? What are their, you know, three bets like? Like really paying attention to those ranges tells you so much about your opponents. And given that this particular opponent had not check raised almost the entire final table. And shows up with that made me think, this guy is probably just clicking buttons, right?
Clicking buttons.
Like now, now, listen, if this guy's check.
It's, it's, it's like such vital info though, like for, for, for villain to. Just check that down and let us see that is a huge mistake.
Well, I mean, this is kind of an awkward card to double barrel.
If I was villain, listen, if I was villain, I'm one million percent betting river.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's fair. That's fair.
I, I, that, that just shows us that we have this, that like villain is gonna be owned the rest of this game. Rest of this turn.
Like, like this absolutely can be a great check raise. But I, I don't, I don't think that in this particular situation was. Now, it's hard to say, we only have four hundred hands on the opponent. He's got a check raise of twelve percent. Like if I had four thousand hands on him and his check raise was twelve percent. This, I would, I would give this check raise a lot of credence because I'd be like, okay, well, he's check raising in a proper percentage of the time. He found a good combo and then we, we act accordingly, but like this is like the first real like legit check raise we've seen from him. Um.
He has no, he, he or she has no idea what they're doing because they just check, check.
Yeah.
Ten high the rest of the time.
Um, so opponent raises, we call. How do you like this lead?
You don't bet there. Um. I.
I'm pretty confident this is gonna be a lead, but we're gonna check.
I, I don't really like it. I like check, I like checking here. If they're, if they're leading. I mean, I, I'd probably check most of my hands here.
Tick tock goes the clock. Uh, we'll see here. Um. So. Big blind has a forty nine percent lead here, sorry, thirty nine percent lead here. Um, we're leading twenty percent pot, uh, a quarter of the time and we're leading sixty seven percent pot, fourteen percent of the time. With this particular combo. It's split down the middle. So, oh, basically what we're gonna see is a lot of this like King, uh, the seven X, six X, five X. Is gonna be like partial combos. Um. It's just gonna be split down the middle because we do need to bet for protection here percentage of the time. But it doesn't wanna commit to like any particular combo. So like, there's just a lot of like. This range kind of hits. It's really interesting that hands like Queen nine and Jack nine. Uh, and King nine two are leads here, cause I don't think these are hands I get to as leads here. Like I know these seven high boards, we lead a lot out of position. Um, but it's really interesting that the hands that just block the nuts and have two overs to the board. Are leading at like a thirty to fifty percent frequency here. Um, and the off suits are a lot higher than the suited. I assume. Our highest frequency lead here is. Uh, Jack nine of diamonds and our lowest frequency is the one with no backdoor flush. So, um. That's really interesting.
Jack, no, okay. I see.
So our backdoor flush draws lead here a lot. Jack nine with a backdoor flush draw. Our unblocking backdoor flush draws wants to check back more. Um, so this, this can go either way. Um, I personally. Like if I'm playing a weaker opponent, I want to lead here more because I just don't think people have a lot of experience dealing with it. That's my take on it. Um, the more aggressive my opponent is, what?
So you're, you're, you're donk betting, you're leading here to, uh. Just kind of turn your hand face up and say, okay, I got a piece of this.
Well, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of to turn it face up. It, it's, it's actually just kind of taking. The, the problem here is if we check and he has a hand like Queen Jack. And he just gets to check back and realize equity on turns, it's really bad for us. Um, and it's, it's not just them hitting their cards, like that's bad in and of itself, but then the other thing is. Uh, if we check in the flop, in the turn as a ten, right? And he's got Queen Jack, he's still gonna bet that, he's gonna rep that ten. He's gonna bet turn and what do we do then? Now we have to make a marginal call on turn. Knowing that the river's gonna be even worse for us ninety percent of the time, right? Like it's just, it, 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 we're out of position, we're in a bad spot. So like if we can take the pot down here with a lead, it's a fist pump.
I'm not against, I'm not against the lead. I just wanna know like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, I didn't think you were. I'm just kind of explaining my thought process. It's like, we don't wanna give overs a free card. Um, we don't wanna give overs a chance to delayed C bet on a lot of cards that are gonna be bad for us. Um, and so, uh, you know, this is just a good spot to try and like deny equity and take down the pot right here. Um, from a theory perspective, we wanna be more balanced in this, it looks like. We don't wanna like commit any like, we just don't, we, we don't just wanna be like, oh, I've got range advantage bet. Like we need to be like kind of basically randomizing here a large percentage of the time, which is good to know. Um, I think what would be really interesting to see, cause I think you were gonna bring this up and then I interrupted you. Is like what our check raises are here, right? Um, cause one of the things is like, if this opponent is like C betting ninety percent of the time in this spot. Then this is a terrible lead, cause we can just check raise and put him in a awkward spot with a lot of our range. Um, the more likely he is to check back, the more we need to lead here. So if you were up against an opponent that was like only C betting like thirty to forty percent of the time. I would wanna lead here like almost a hundred percent, cause I just do not want the free card popping off. Um. So let's see if we check. An opponent bets. Let's see what our check raises are here. So our check raises are going to be a lot of stuff here that hits this board. Um, pair plus straight draws. Uh, are like pure check raises here. All of this eight, six, eight, five, eight, four, eight, seven. Um. These, uh, backdoor flush draws plus, uh, open ended's. And overs are really high check raises. Um, a lot of these like weaker pairs here, like you notice like King six specifically hardly ever check raises. King five doesn't. King seven check raises really aggressively, cause it's top pair. We've got good equity that we need to equity deny, right? Which if we go back, and this is what's cool, this is another cool way to study this. If we go back. So like our King seven is split right down the middle. Um, but this is split down the middle for like, we're betting, we're leading. And the, the other thing, I, okay, so check this out. This is the cool thing. All right. So King seven specifically, we're pretty much either betting large or check raising. You see that?
See it.
Same with Ace seven. Ace seven, we're either bet, betting large or we're check raising. So that's really cool to see. Um.
I do like the check raise there.
Yeah. And again, from an exploit standpoint, it just comes down to how often are they actually, um, popping off? And, and C betting here. Um, as played, let me go back. We actually led. And opponent called. And the turn is.
You're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. And that's the problem. It's just like, we end up in so many spots where like. The, the turn card is just puke worthy and it puts us in an awkward spot. And that's where we are right now. It's like, okay, we're, we're kind of in a dicey spot here. Um, it's interesting, our King six wants to double barrel here.
I like it. I like it.
Um. That's really interesting. I wonder, let's go back really quick. How much Queen, he's got a lot of Queen X here. Okay, I just wanted to see, uh, if he didn't have a lot of Queen X. He's got a lot of Queen X, but obviously his range is. Pretty uncondensed at this point, so. So yeah, it wants us to double barrel. I'm pretty sure I didn't get there. Oh, I did get there. I'm so good at poker. No, I'm just kidding. Um. Wow. Very cool. Yep, they call.
Let's see.
River is the Jack of Diamonds.
It's pretty bad.
Yeah, not a great card. Again. Um, and, and now theory just wants to go absolutely ridiculous here. What in the world is going on?
I mean.
Now, like, the thing is, like, we're just not supposed to get here very often with anything, which is kind of interesting. Um. This is absurd, like. This makes sense, like Queen six, obviously we go really, really big, like, uh, King six and Ace six just, just triple off here. Really comfortably. Um.
This is not a selling point for Range Trainer Pro. I don't know what is.
Now, the thing that we need to note, okay, this is really important here. Um, the sizings that RTP is using here on the river. Is ten fifty, a hundred and a hundred and eighty nine percent pot. This is a ten percent pot river bet. So we should be.
Which combo, which combo is a ten?
King six, King six, it's ten percent pot. We're supposed to basically go one point one six bigs here. Um, that is, I don't even know what to think about that because like. This is crazy.
Can't wait to use this, like, this is. I honestly cannot wait to use this in game.
I mean, we're actually betting ten percent pot here on the river forty two percent of the time. And, and it's a lot of our six X, it's some of our seven X. What's the strongest hand that we have? I mean, we do have some bluffs with the ten percent, like King nine off. Which basically blocks, uh, a whole mess of stuff. It blocks nine, eight, it blocks King, Queen, like. We do have some bluffs with the ten X. Uh, with the ten percent pot, which I mean, who's bluffing ten percent pot here ever? It's kind of filthy. And I guess that's kind of the, the concept, right? Is like, we get to bluff ten percent pot. And you think, well, who's gonna fold to a ten percent pot bluff? Well, if nobody's folding to ten percent pot bluff, guess what we get to do with all of our weak value? We get to bet ten percent. So that's kind of like. Yeah, like if they're never ever folding to ten percent bluffs, then we just get to like getting value town with all of our six X and. Uh, seven.
Our one, our one BB value.
Right, right. And then if like, if it's like, well, maybe they will fold, well then now our King nine offsuit just becomes the sexiest like, you know, uh. Ten percent bluff here on the river ever. Um, I guarantee you, I did not bet ten percent here on the river. Uh, we go check, check.
King nine is folding out, um.
Yeah.
Ace nine or something.
And look at this, we would have, we, we, we were, we had him outkicked. We had him dominated the whole time. What was that guy doing? No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, we had him more than outkicked. We had him out paired.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I'm curious, uh. He just never has King five here, but again, the ranges are a little bit off because of, uh. How things played out. So that was, that's an, that's an interesting spot. Uh, I think we get time for one or more, two more juicy spots. Let's see if we can find some good ones. Ooh, this is a good one. All right, so. Might be, this might be a good one. Um, I don't know that we have, we'll, we'll see if ten six is in the big blend defining range here. It should be. The crazy thing is I'm up two to one here. At one point I was down to three bigs.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. When were you at three bigs?
Yeah.
All of these spots are heavy.
We, we lost a massive spot where we had a flush draw and an over on the flop and. Got it in and ran into top pair and our over was, uh, blocked. He had the overs, the same over we did and we bricked out. Um, so let's see what we're doing on this flop.
How does this mic sound? It sound weird.
Doesn't sound bad.
Okay, so I'm using the mic on the, on the.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like a headset mic.
And, uh, this is what I gotta hook up today.
That's what I got right here. Right there. All right. So yeah, we're checking here for sure. Ten six off is in the defending range. So villain checks back. This'll be good.
Of course.
And then, and then look at this turn card.
Oh my god.
Look at this turn card. All right, so.
That's so funny.
I mean, I think we've, I think we've pretty safely could pull Jack X out of their range, right? Like I'm not. This turn card's not terrible. The, the, the reason this turn card's not terrible. Or the reason this turn card's terrible is not because he has jacks. The reason this turn card's terrible is because. Queen nine, Queen eight, King nine, King, Queen, all of those hands, pocket sevens, pocket sixes, pocket fives, like. All of those hands just went. All of those hands just went to dust. That's why this is a terrible turn card for us.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. It's like. We we missed value on the flop and now we're.
Well, we were out of position. We were never gonna bet the flop. It just, it just sucks that the 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 runout is the way it is.
No, I mean, I wasn't saying that we bet the flop. No, we checked. I feel like we checked the flop. A lot.
So it's interesting, like now on turn, we actually are betting like thirty-five, forty percent of the time with our Jack X. And we're mixing that in with some like flush draws as bluffs, which is really cool. I don't know that I'm ever getting to a bluff here with like eight, seven suited. Like. You know, eight, seven of hearts is a really sexy bluff here, but it kind of makes some sense, right? Like we can still hit a straight. We can still hit flushes. And if we can get ace ace high to fold out or we can get there in ace high, both of those scenarios are really good for us. So yeah, this is kind of uh. Kind of interesting. Uh, we did check, which we're gonna do a large percentage of the time here. Villain checks as well. River is a four.
We're just checking all the way.
Uh, I mean, it's just so hard to get called by anything here, like. I think it comes down to, I mean, we'll see what what theory says here, but I think it comes down to like. How likely we are to get called by Ace and King High? So like from a theory perspective, we're gonna get called by Ace and King High here a lot. Um, so I we get to like just pure bet.
Overbet here, don't we?
Um, so it's interesting, the overbets are all ten X. So it actually wants to overbet uh all of our ten X and it uses partial frequencies with all of our Jack X. But. But here's the thing, we're also overbetting with six deuce suited. So if you're not overbetting here with six deuce suited, like. Like.
Oh, my god.
Like all of our low suited busted flush draws are just going. Because we have, well, think about it. We have zero showdown value, right? And we're unblocking all of their folds. We're unblocking ace X, we're unblocking King X, and there's no ICM pressure. So like, i- it's gonna take these really busted flush draws. And and it's gonna say the only way we can win the hand is to rip these. And if we're gonna rip all of these like weak, no showdown flush draws. They can't even beat hands like pocket sevens, pocket sixes, pocket eights, right? Like. That that basically has to rip these, then we have to have a pretty high frequency of overbets. So like, all of our ten X overbets, which is really interesting. We have some Jack X overbets, so it's not really like. They don't just get to like fist pump call here with a jack all the time and and not even have a little bit of a sweat. And then all of our ace highs are the smaller sizing. So this is, this is really wild. This is really wild. No, I just knocked the trash over. Uh, yeah, so. But the but because I don't think we're getting called by as much ace high and like. King high as possible. I think we're better off like checking and letting somebody make a really bad stab here. Cuz they might just go, oh, he checked three times. I'm just gonna stab with my my range, right? So from an exploit standpoint. I kind of actually like betting here or like checking three ways here. And this is like the dream spot because literally what does he have here? Like this is never a Jack or a ten. Never. And I'd actually, I would actually rather have a ten here than a Jack. Can you, can you tell me why? This is a good, this is a good trivia. Why is it better to have a ten here than a Jack?
I don't know.
Because because the only like, the only hand he could check. Two streets and then go this big on river is quad tens. He's never checking back quad Jack uh jacks here. He's gonna go really small in the flop with a set of jacks. Quad tens is the only hand he's probably checking back flop and turn. So I think I would actually rather have a ten here than a Jack. And we make the call and he turned four, five into a bluff. Which? Let's see, let's see if this is actually a decent bluff. Look at that, four, five suited. Look, look how many bluffs they have too. They've got a lot of bluffs here. They're betting thirty-seven percent of the time.
Check, check, check was the max.
Yeah, we we got the max. Uh, we get three bets. Yeah, I'm not gonna look this one up cuz King deuce is not gonna be in our button opening range. This is an interesting one. Are you ever uh? You ever three betting this?
I mean.
Yeah, this is probably an SPR.
We're not a hundred percent. You know, just calling this.
This is probably an SPR where this is like a perfect three bet bluff hand too, because if he four bets, we just happily fold and we don't care.
Pick up. You know, it's too big that he threw in the middle.
Well, I am curious. Cuz this is one of the things we looked back in our first study session was calling too much with ace highs was one of my leaks. Um, but we have a backdoor straight draw here and we unblock the flush draws. So I'm kind of curious to see. How that impacts things. And we got a sixteen second wait here. This will be the last one and then we'll 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 cut this off. Been good. I've learned a ton today, Frank. I wanna do a lot of this.
You know, some people like to watch Netflix and stuff like that. I like doing this. Although there is a new He-Man I need to watch.
A new He-Man?
On Netflix.
Does it have She-Ra or any of that stuff or is it just He-Man?
I don't know.
My wife might lose her mind. Off the look. Well, she's a huge She-Ra fan, which is like the same like universe.
Same universe, yeah.
Yeah, it's like Superman and Wonder Woman type thing, so. If if the if it goes that far into it, she could be really interested. She could also be like, eh, that's dumb. I never know with her. So when villain bets here. Okay, this is. We're not folding any of our like, we're we're, I shouldn't say we're not. We're folding a very small percentage with this like particular hand, Ace eight. It varies on the suits a lot. We're raising the highest frequency with our uh. With our um. Let's see what's going on here. Hold on. So Ace of Hearts hands are raising seventeen percent of the time. Ace of Diamonds hands are actually raising the most. Oh, okay, I see. Ace of Diamonds, Eight of Hearts. Blocking the backdoor flush draw and then having a backdoor flush draw at the same time is the largest raise here, thirty-three percent. Uh, with our particular combo only having the backdoor. Eight high flush draw blocked. We are, let's see here. I have to switch the suits around, so. Give me a second. This would be Ace of Spades, Eight of Diamonds. We're folding twenty-five percent of the time, calling sixty-five percent of the time, raising ten percent of the time. Are you floating this?
I think. I think we're ahead a lot of the time. So, of course.
So we call.
Now we pick up. The straight draw.
Yeah, now we pick up the straight draw, which is really interesting. And there's two flush draws out there.
Ace is good, six is good. I'd like to think that eight is good.
Look at the number of leads we have here. I think I think this is this, uh, so listen, I am one of the biggest turn lead advocates on the planet. I love turn leads. I think people are terribly defending against them. I use them probably more than most. This is a spot I never find a turn lead. This is a spot I get to be even sexier and grow my turn league game because it it and it makes sense, right? Like, this is a card for our range. So we should be able to fire some turn leads here. Um, because all of our value hands like. Obviously, hands like six, eight got there, pocket sevens got there. Hands like six, seven and seven, eight now have a pair plus a straight draw. We can have some ridiculously sick like combo draws here, like we can have. Seven, eight of hearts, right? Just like absurd, like we just have everything. So with us having that much like, that many hands that uh we can bet for pure value. We get to have some bluffs too. And so like Ace eight off, blocking the nuts. It's interesting that Ace eight suited is a pure call. Uh, A seven like basically leads here for like equity denial, which makes sense. And then we've got a lot of like just random eight X here. Look at all this, Frank. Ten, eight, nine, eight, ten, nine suited, ten, eight suited. It's really interesting. Me ten, nine off here is a pure. Lead bluff. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a semi bluff cuz we do have a gut shot. But how sick is that? This is wild. There's no way I'm finding these leads here right now in game. I don't know about you.
Means it's just more stuff that. I mean.
What?
You led with it.
How did I find this lead? This is blowing my mind. I found spots. I'm like, oh, obviously I bet here and I don't. And then I find this lead? Oh, I'm proud of myself, but why wasn't I just dialed it earlier? This is wild. I'm actually legit surprised I led here. I love it. I absolutely love it, but I'm like crazy surprised I actually did it in game. This is not a spot that I would like. I I don't think I get here often enough. But yeah, this is sexy. And then of course, just pain train. Now. This will be interesting. Uh, I'm pretty sure you're never folding here, right?
I mean. We s- we still, I mean, what what are they raising us with here?
Uh, from a theory perspective. They are raising, I mean, there's just gonna be a ton of flush draws in here. So it's kind of hard. They're gonna have some flush draws. They're raising here thirty-four percent of the time. Um, they're gonna raise some like eight X that blocks the nuts basically. They're gonna raise some seven X for equity denial. Some of their like pair plus. Yeah.
They're raising an E six probably.
Yep, yep, but they're not raising Queen six. For some odd reason. But yeah, like they've got a decent amount of raises and and uh bluffs here.
I mean. So. Here's my thing. If we call, so we call their raise right here. And. We. We gin, let's say we gin and we hit our straight. Are they? Shoving into us? Are we check, are we? Are we checking to them? On the river, are we?
Yeah, it's a great question.
You know?
Yep. That's a really great question.
What are we making off this if we're calling?
Right. Yep, I I think that's a great question. So and it's interesting, theory wise, doesn't even touch this. It's a jammer. It's like a very. Holy crap, this is like, it's a very small um. Like rip. Uh, but it's pretty much, uh, I mean, very small rip. Like. Eleven percent jam. Seven percent call and it's like eighty percent fold.
So I mean. They're they're not, I don't I don't know. They they could be. We we've got the Eight of Diamonds. So it's less likely they've got the the Diamond Flush. Or the or the straight. They could have six, three. You know? Six, three of hearts.
Oh, they've got some value hands too.
You know, that's what I'm saying. I mean, they've. They've got lots of, they they got lots of stuff that we're just. You know?
And we got out of the way.
Good. I think it was a good fold.
Yep, yep, yep. Frank, this has been fun. We're gonna do a lot more of this.
Yeah, it's good. I I wanna do more. I wanna, you know. I'm just here to get better, man. I wanna get better.
What is uh, what's your grind tonight? What are you doing tonight? Are you cash game?
Well. I will definitely be doing cash game. But today I've got, like I said, I've got. This junk, I've got. Oh, I've got. I got lots of streaming stuff. I don't know if I showed you this, but like. I just went and bought, you know. I got the Stream Deck XL. I'm I'm all about it. I'm I'm ready to rock, man. I am. I'm pumped for learning. More stuff with you on these uh, on this Range Trainer stuff. I'm really interested in that. I've already profited. From our last session. From our last GTO session.
Yeah.
So. And I've had, I had a good weekend. You know, it's. So I mean, I'm getting results from this and just imagine what we're gonna be like six months down the road.
Oh dude, it's gonna be glorious. It's gonna be glorious. Make sure you guys. Head over to realfrankmail.com. It'll take you to his YouTube channel. Subscribe to his YouTube channel so you can get his content. Uh, if you enjoyed this, hit that follow button uh up above, uh, so you can get our content. I'm gonna be live over on my poker channel, twitch.tv. Slash Rob Gardner Poker later tonight. It's basically the old Poker Pastor channel. So if you're already a follower or subscriber over there, you'll be a follower subscriber now anyway, but we're gonna grind um some tournaments tonight. Uh, and look at high hands showing up right at the end of the uh stream. High hands, we want more. We want more data. I want, I want to like.
I personally don't know high hands, but I do, I do love uh all the stuff we've been doing with his uh, with his stuff.
Oh, man, it's so much fun. I I I want, I want every scenario. I want every position, every stack depth. I. I want it all. Um, it'll come in time. But uh, yeah, uh, I'll be uh live over on the other channel later today. Make sure you guys keep an eye out for that uh for me, for Frank. We're gonna say see you later. We're gonna send it over to Tyler. Um, send him our love and uh we will uh see you guys soon. Uh, probably. Probably going to uh, we'll we'll do some more of these this week for sure. So stick around and uh we'll do some more studying. Alright, see everybody.
See ya.
And we are out. Good stuff, man. I have to go to, I have to take my son to a.